Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting, this March 27th, meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to Order. Thank you all for being here tonight. We have a pretty full agenda and it looks like a pretty full house. Thank you all for coming. We're going to try to move along as quickly as possible. First item, the first thing we need to do is approve an agenda though. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Mr. Fult. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, please, remove your hats and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. You may be seated. And please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we're going to go to school recognitions, the Brittany Lamb-Kelly-Coggsdale Character Counts Award. And I believe Ms. Jackie Baker, there you are.
Good evening and welcome, everybody. Welcome Chairman Laura, Dr. Scheichel, members of the board, and also to the full house that we have. I know that we're competing with Virginia Tech basketball game later, so I wasn't expecting so many visitors. I also am glad to see a lot of former students. I know you're here for a government class and not because you missed middle school, but it's good to see you all. I would like to begin our portion of this evening by number one, expressing gratitude to my staff. You may not be able to tell based on how wonderful our auditorium looks, but we had a musical here this weekend. So yesterday afternoon, this was a full set. So many thanks to the families, the crew members, and our staff members who were able to strike that set for us quickly so that we could make our auditorium ready for tonight. I would also like to thank my two assistant principals, Mr. Brad Saylor and Mr. Will Gein. You will hear from them in just a moment. But basically, they have not only helped prepare for tonight, but they help make this place run smoothly every single day. I could not do my job without them. And I just want to make sure I'm saying that publicly. I try to say it regularly, but it's also important to say it publicly. So I will go ahead and hand it to them so they can tell you about some of our awesome students.
Good evening. If I, I have the pleasure of introducing our first Kelly-Coggsdale Character Counts Student of the Month Award. If Ms. Laura Harris could come down and join me, and if Laura's parents can stand as well, that would be fabulous. You're about to hear what an awesome student Ms. Laura Harris is, but we cannot have awesome students without awesome parents at home. So thank you for all you do for your daughter on the home front. I'm going to read real quick just a couple words that your teachers have shared about you. It says, "Laura Harris is a great student. She always does what is expected of her, and when it comes to classwork, she is very thorough and manages to connect all of our concepts that we have learned. During interactions with peers, she is mindful of our diverse population, and when interacting with adults, she is incredibly respectful. Laura Harris is recognized by her teachers because she is hardworking, intelligent, and an overall great student. During the school day, Laura always goes above and beyond what she is expected to do and helps uplift others to their full potential, both by modeling excellence and encouraging others to be their best selves. Her larger-than-life heart shines through in everything that she does. Her empathy and ability to connect to the life experience of others really helps her create beautiful, complex characters in her theater pursuits and to move audiences with her voice and choir. When it comes to academics, Laura's work ethic is impeccable. She delights teachers with her ability to make cross-curricular connections and apply her knowledge to real-world experiences. Anyone who crosses paths with Laura can't help but feel deeply respected and cared for by her." So our, one of our Character Counts Award winners for this month is Ms. Laura Harris.
Wait a second, Laura. You with the board, the school board wants to give you a certificate of recognition and also a certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar. And also, there's a nice little American lapel flag here for you as well. But I want to say thank you for displaying such character in our schools. There are many things that we look at at policies or different things that are going on. A lot of things in our schools could be fixed just by displaying good character. And one of those characters of our pillars is caring. And you'll never know just how much just caring for others will get you by in life. And so I want to give you this tonight and say thank you as your school board member, saying thank you for all that you've done inside these schools. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mom and Dad.
Our second Character Counts Award winner is Mateo Musa. And these are Mateo's parents. We were talking earlier before we did this presentation about normally when middle schoolers get off the bus, we greet them, "Good morning." You know, "How are you?" And most middle schoolers give us a, like, if we get eye contact at all. But Mateo is one that says "good morning" every day to every adult who says something to him and just shows the kind of character that he has. These are the things that your teacher said about you, Mateo. Mateo Musa is a natural leader in the classroom and around the school. Once he understands material, he is quick to help those around him reach that same level of understanding. He brings a positive attitude to the classroom, which improves the learning experience for everyone. His energy and enthusiasm is contagious, inspiring those around him to find joy in learning. Mateo is also highly involved in our technology department. He is a student athlete on the Spotswood tennis team, and he is an active member in our Technology Student Association, TSA. He is also a TSA officer, and so in his office role and his student in general, Mateo was thoughtful, courteous, and always ready to help with any task. He leads most often by the strong example he sets and invests himself fully in his work. And they concluded with how bright, curious, and trustworthy that you are. So thank you, Mateo, for being a great role model for your peers.
First off, Mom and Dad, what a great name, Mateo. That's a great name. And thank you for being, one thing I heard, a leader here at this school. So thank you for being a leader. Thank you for showing character here at Montevideo. And I'm sure that it will go on to Spotswood as you go on, and hopefully I get a chance to come up there and see you play some tennis. Here you go. Thank you, parents.
It is my honor this evening to recognize our Volunteer of the Year, Mrs. Jessica Ashby. And I am going to ask her to come forward also so I can brag a little bit on her. When it was time for us as an admin team to talk about who we wanted to highlight this evening, without a doubt, we all selected Mrs. Ashby. Jessica serves as our PTSA Hospitality Chairperson, which essentially means she's in charge of coordinating special things to recognize and show appreciation to the Montevideo staff, which she does amazingly well. For instance, she has networked within our parent community and through local businesses to obtain a variety of gift cards that are awarded to staff members through a drawing at the end of each week. Jessica also orchestrates meals and treats for our staff on a regular basis. Not only does she coordinate these efforts to make these meals happen, she also plays an active role in cooking when necessary. She once, single-handedly, cooked somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 pounds of ground beef, or did I underestimate? It was way more. So basically, she provided a taco bar to our entire staff for a workday treat. So you can only imagine what your kitchen looked like and smelled like through that process. What is most impressive about Jessica is her ability to get things done quickly and efficiently. I've not seen a challenge that she has not been able to rise and meet. If I asked her tonight to move a mountain by tomorrow morning, she would find a way to make it happen in order to help others. We appreciate her flexibility, dedication, and creativity to serve our school community. Thank you, Jessica.
Ms. Ashby, we couldn't do what we do here in Rockingham County Public Schools without our volunteers. So thank you so much for all that you have invested, your time and money and sweat to serve our staff here. And we want to offer you this certificate as well, just a small token of our appreciation of recognition and saying thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
All right. We also have a brief presentation for you all this evening, which highlights the grade-level teaming that we are currently doing in our sixth and seventh grade. Teaming is essentially a core group of teachers from the four major content areas of math, science, social studies, and language arts, sharing the same group of students. So they do conferences together, they do field trips together, they do special activities. Teaming has historically been known as a best practice in middle schools and at the heart of middle school philosophy because it fosters relationships with students and their families. We appreciate the commitment that the school board and the central office gave us last spring so we could implement teaming across the middle schools in Rockingham County. Here at Montevideo, that meant hiring two new teachers so that we had the staffing to form three grade-level teams in the sixth and seventh grade. We have seen so many benefits, which you will hear more about momentarily in our presentation, so that we are also going to try to find a way to do teaming in eighth grade next year. So I would like to thank Mr. Saylor for compiling this video, where you will see firsthand some testimonials and some things that our teams are actively doing.
So a lot of the benefits of teaming means that we get to share all of the same kids, which means I know exactly who I can go talk to when I'm having or seeing an issue in the classroom with a certain student. And we can work together to see if that's behavior we're seeing in multiple classrooms or if it's just something that might have to do with my room in particular. It makes it really easy for us when we come and have student studies on a student. We all can speak together about a certain student, issues we're seeing, and things that we think we might be able to help them with going forward. We're able to build really great relationships with our students. And the students are able to build really great relationships with each other as well since they share the same teachers. Teaming has also made it possible for us to plan cross-curricular activities for our students as well as give us the flexibility to make little changes in our time schedule to put on little events for kids. Recently, we had a big Pi Day celebration. That was a lot of fun for the kids. And we had Pi Day for the whole day, and at the end of the day, we got to get together and have a big celebration.
Teaming this year has made it so that I feel like I know the kids really well and I can communicate with my own colleagues about how they're doing, and we can really stay with the kids and get to know them as a whole person instead of just in my classroom.
I think the benefits of teaming is we've been able to really intimately get to know the kids much better because now, you know, history, science, everything aligned, I know what every kid's assignments are, and they know we all have that commonality. Taking that into consideration, we can also do units together. Math and history, we're doing a cross-country tour together where they're stopping at sites along what we talk about. English has transformed their room. They did World War II right along with us. They did World War II poetry, Holocaust readings. It's just been, we've fully immersed the kids. And it's so exciting because the kids come to us and they're like, "Mr. Good, do you know we did World War II in English class today?" Like, we're surprised by it. But it's been really good because they're getting it from all angles, and it's very fluid to them. Plus, we can give them a lot more support.
What I like about being on a team is that you can compete with each other and see your disadvantages and your advantages better.
What I like about being on a team is how everyone works together and how you can make a bunch of friends on whatever team you have. And then all the teachers are really nice and they help you a lot. It's just generally really nice to be on a team because teachers just help a lot.
With all teachers, all of our four teachers in our one group working all together into one thing, instead of like the whole seventh grade, like all of the teachers. And the teachers, like, take different assignments and they pair them together so that you're all, like, you're, you have to, like, work with something and then you can bring that into another class and use it there.
Thank you very much for that presentation. That, I'm excited to see that. That looks like it's really going to be great for students. So thank you all for presenting that to us tonight. Now we're going to move on to Inspire Awards. And first, we have Erin Hurst presenting to Holly Fur, a second-grade teacher at Cub Run.
I am so pleased to be able to present this award to Mrs. Fur. Both of my daughters have had Mrs. Fur for second grade, and both have commented that she is the best teacher ever. As I have watched Mrs. Fur interacting with kids in her classroom during visits and on field trips, I've been impressed by her positivity and authenticity. She genuinely sees the value in each child and brings out the best in her classroom without a feeling of forced charisma. It's as if she's interacting with and guiding her own children in learning and living life. I was impressed with how she handled the pandemic situation, keeping things laid back and positive, and allowing my daughter Eliza to take pictures of her handwritten work to put on Seesaw when she was frustrated with the online formats. Two years later, when Eliza saw Mrs. Fur over the summer, they gave each other a big hug like old friends. Another thing that struck me this year was Mrs. Fur's genuine optimism about the letter system for reading. I had my own concerns initially, but she was able to explain things to me as a parent and discuss it honestly, expressing both the adjustments and timing of things in the classroom while keeping an overall positivity and enthusiasm for the program as a whole. One last note, her interaction with parents is outstanding. In the beginning of the year, she makes parents feel included with parent involvement surveys. Throughout the year, she makes excellent use of the communicator folder with weekly updates and flexible homework, always thanking parents for sharing our children with her. She also uses Seesaw and email to keep parents informed with timely responses to questions but not overwhelming with unnecessary info. When my daughter Lydia left school early with an injury, we were able to use Seesaw messages just enough to reassure the other students that Lydia was okay and for Lydia to hear that the students were thinking of her. Mrs. Fur knows how to foster a feeling of family and friendship within her classroom. She's truly encouraging lifelong learning and good citizenship. Holly Fur will definitely stand out in our memories as an outstanding teacher and person. And Mrs. Fur, I thank you so much for just continuing to be a shining positive light on all the kids in your classroom. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Ms. Fur, thank you for all you do for our students. And I should have explained, let me call up the next one, and then I will explain. Isabella Argrio, student presenting to Ruth Beck, eighth-grade civics teacher at Wilbur Pence. And while you guys come up, I'll explain. Because for the group, I remembered what the Inspire Awards were, but I didn't realize, I didn't think about everybody that's new here tonight. So our Inspire Awards are basically, they're, anybody can nominate a teacher, or anybody within the school system, really. And then they can come to the school board meeting and recognize, and read their submission as why they believe that this person deserves recognition. So I will now turn it over to you, Isabella.
My name is Bella Argro. I'm an eighth-grade student at Wilbur Pence Middle School. Ms. Beck is my eighth-grade teacher, is my eighth-grade civics teacher. So far this year, she has been a fun and outgoing teacher to be around. She is patient and kind with her students, including me. She has a great sense of humor but is also serious when she needs to be. When someone's having a rough day or is acting off, she takes the time to talk to them when she gets a chance. She never puts a student down for who they are, what they like, or believe in. I aspire to be like her when I'm older. I think she deserves this award with all the hard work she puts into this job. I'm so grateful to have her as a teacher.
Thank you very much, Isabella. That was a wonderful job. And thank you, Ms. Beck, for all you do for our students. We will now hear from Shelley Newman, presenting to Keely Hinkle, a first-grade teacher at John Whalen. And as you guys are listening to these stories, if you have one that you'd like to share with us, all you have to do is contact Kaitlin Gilkerson, our clerk.
Hello, everyone. I'm Shelley Newman. This is Keely Hinkle. Ms. Hinkle is beyond deserving of the Inspire Award. She's a wonderful teacher of academics, but why she is so deserving of the Inspire Award is because what she incorporates into the classroom is activities that build up the children's confidence and also teach the importance of being a good citizen. Examples of this in the classroom are your affirmation station, students bringing in items from home to share about their family, and the first-grade hot chocolate sales that you all did to raise money to get food items for the needy. She also takes so much time to write feedback notes on classroom assignments that are sent home. For example, she writes things like, "I love these detailed drawings. You are such a hard worker." Or, "Let's slow down next time and make your letters a little bit more neat." Ms. Hinkle also supports her children outside of the classroom by attending their birthday parties and their sporting events. And knowing that my daughter is learning standard activities in academics such as reading, writing, math, et cetera, but also the importance of caring about others by a teacher who I know shows her own love and support for her classroom children every day is all I could really want as a parent. So, thank you. And I also wanted to share, this is just a really good example of Ms. Hinkle. So they made these placemats for Thanksgiving of what they were thankful for. And Ms. Hinkle handwrote on this, this note to Nora, and I'll just read some of it. It was so sweet, made me cry. Obviously, I'm a cryer. She says, "Dear Nora, I'm so thankful for your kind heart and beautiful soul. I am thankful for your silly personality and your creative mind. I am thankful for your generosity. I am so thankful that you love to explore everything and you are truly one of a kind. I hope you never change. Always be true to yourself and know that you are amazing. I am thankful that you are my student and I love seeing you every day. Love, Ms. Hinkle." As a parent, I feel like that's all we could really ask for in a teacher. So thank you, Ms. Hinkle. And this is Nora.
Thank you very much, Ms. Newman and Nora, was it? Thank you for coming tonight, Nora. And Ms. Hinkle, thank you for all you do for our students. And that advice, "Slow down and make your letters neater," I think a lot of us could benefit from that. So thank you very much. That concludes our Inspire Awards for this evening. We will now move on to the VSBA Art Competition winners. And Ms. Becky Ford will be presenting.
Good evening to Dr. Scheichel and members of the board. Tonight is my honor to present the following 12 students to you. In a blind competition, their work was voted as the top four in their division, elementary, middle school, and high school, from our entire county. You can see the award-winning pieces out in the hallway outside of the auditorium, so I hope everybody gets a chance to stop and see those and acknowledge those students' amazing work. The first place works from each category, elementary, middle school, and high school, will be going with Dr. Shiflett in three weeks to our regional competition of the Virginia School Board Association. And so we're so proud to send our Rockingham County work on to the state level. I will be calling the students up in reverse order from fourth place to first place, beginning with elementary school. Students, as you hear your name called, please come up. You're going to get your certificate. You're going to go up these stairs on this side without tripping on the cord and stand on the stage until everybody's up there so I can take a picture. Got it? All right. So for our elementary winners, we have Leann Lance from Plains Elementary School, Jessie Airy from Lacy Spring Elementary School, Trey Hamar Rashid from McGackeysville Elementary School, and Rayleigh Bennett from Peakview Elementary School. For our middle school competitors, we have Ella Streit from Wilbur Pence Middle School, Amarisah Rainford from J. Frank Hilliard Middle School, Valentina Velasco-Bartista from J. Frank Hilliard Middle School, and Diana Zudelin from Montevideo Middle School. For our high school competitors, we've got Abigail Dibb from East Rockingham High School, Nia Dove from East Rockingham High School, Sarah Aaron from Turner Ashby High School, and Zoe Earl from Broadway High School. And as you might notice, we're missing a couple due to sporting events and musicals and choir competitions, but we are so proud of all of these students, and so we hope that you get a chance to see their work. All right, kids, we're going to take a picture of you in three, two, one. And one more thing I ought to do is, if you are a teacher, an art teacher of these students, would you please stand and be recognized for all your hard work? All right, kids, you are good to come back down this way without tripping on the cord. And while I'm up here, I'm going to take the time to acknowledge another group of people, so thank you for having us here. It is my pleasure to bring the fine arts to the school board meetings. The next 15 students that you're going to see have placed at the highest echelons of music in secondary elementary, or in secondary education. With choir, students audition at their regional event. Our region goes from Allegheny County in the south to Highland and Bath County up in the north, Page and Lou Ray County. Out of 20 potential spots for students to make this ensemble, Rockingham County took 11 of those spots, which was just fantastic. It speaks to the level of education that our students are getting. The band competition is a little bit different. They don't do it by region. Instead, it's every student who is eligible, every student who places at the top of their region, goes to JMU all on one day, and about 1,000 students have a blind competition to see if they go. And we have three band and orchestra students who have that. Our final recognition is a middle school student, which I don't believe we've ever had a middle school student do this before, but they made the Middle School ACDEA Honor Choir, which is the state level of middle school choir. So we are just so excited to recognize these wonderful, wonderful musicians for their band and choir and orchestra accomplishments. We've got Emily Elliott from Broadway High School. We've got Emily Elliott from Broadway High School. Seth Emrick from Broadway High School. Darren Mahoney from Broadway High School. Kylie Shirck from Broadway High School. Avery T. Walt from Broadway High School. Andres Garcia from East Rockingham High School. Aiden Cahill from Spotswood High School. Reese Mills from Spotswood High School. Helen Paget from Spotswood High School. Macy I. from Turner Ashby High School. Emily McAvoy from Turner Ashby High School. And these are all our choir students. From the band and orchestra division, we've got Eddie McGill from Spotswood High School. Micah Wingfield from Spotswood High School. And Erin Yeo from Spotswood High School. Our wonderful middle school participant could not be here tonight, she has another engagement, but Camden Kyle from Wilbur Pence Middle School is our Virginia ACDEA middle school. And if you are a teacher of one of these band or choir students, would you please stand up and be recognized music teachers? And if you guys would hang tight, we're going to take a picture for your parents. But let me get out of it.
3, 2, 1. One more. 3, 2, 1.
Thank you all for your support of fine arts in Rockingham County. We appreciate it.
Congratulations to all of you. We're so very proud of you. Just amazing accomplishments. We're now, that concludes our recognitions and presentations. We're going to move on to our public comment period. Actually, we're going to give folks just a beat to go ahead and slip out if you'd like But congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much for coming tonight. We're so very, very proud of you all. I do want to take this moment to remind everybody, if you are signed up for public comment, please make sure that you pick up a rules sheet to make sure that you're, and familiarize yourself with our guidelines before you speak. We will have a 3-minute timer, and there will be a chime at 30 seconds to help you kind of know when you need to start wrapping up. All comments need to be directed to the board as a whole, not individual board members, and we do require that you follow our pillars of character in all of your comments. Okay, our first speaker tonight is Nancy Bassett.
Chairman Lor, school board members, Dr. Scheichel. At the last school board meeting, Mr. Cross presented a proposal for a dual immersion program for elementary students. And while that would be worthwhile, the county also has some other needs that the Education Association feels needs to be addressed. Some of our students are coming to us having had very little schooling, due to the differences in the culture from where they're coming from. Some of them are not really understanding English, and we're sending some of these Level 1 and Level 2 students out into core classes, which would be science, social studies, and math, with one class of intensive English, and expecting them to succeed. Could we please consider having a full day intensive EL, an EL program, where they can get the help that they truly deserve, and then they can go out and succeed when they are truly ready to be in core classes? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Zach Nicholson.
Dr. Scheichel, I'm Zach Nicholson. I'm here today to discuss some content that's in our books at our middle schools and high schools. And some of you may know the bill to protect students and parents by allowing them to opt their child out of access to questionable books passed in the house but died in the Virginia Senate. The issue of content raised its head here when the Sherman and Lexie novel was challenged last year. Ironically excerpts were first censored from public meeting for being inappropriate, and little to no action was done regarding policy. I'd like to see that changed. As a board and community, we do not need to wait on Richmond or upcoming local election results here to enact some policy regarding R C P S. As I stated back last year in February, I do not want a book banned, but if we are to keep these books, we need more responsibility and transparency. What I'd like to see is a policy that is similar to a rating system that we have in place for other media like TV and movies, where parents and students are informed on content of what's in the book, and then parents can decide what's right for their child and opt out of access to that book or others like it. I'm no lawyer, but in Virginia, as I understand it now, if a teacher uses a book or materials that have questionable content for an assignment, parents are notified. But if a student wants to check out the same material for recreational reading, not assignment-related, parents are not notified. Same content, same book. What I find astonishing is students cannot search or access the same content that's in some of these books using their Chromebooks or iPads, but for our books, this content is accessible because of some loophole in the law. That makes zero sense to me. Content is content no matter what media platform it comes from. I have researched what books are where using the GoFolit search, and R C P S teachers and staff that I've spoken with, who will remain anonymous, have assured me the GoFolit search is accurate in determining what books are where in R C P S. So again, I will not read excerpts here I have here tonight. I do not want to be inappropriate, but I really wish the board would afford me the same luxury for my child as I have to for the meetings here. If you recall, last year, I asked Dr. Scheichel if I could file a media complaint form. He told me I could not because my child wasn't at Elkton Middle School where the book was located. Well, my how time flies. My oldest son will attend 6th grade at Elkton Middle this fall. So since no one on this board wants to address content that's in these books or give parents an option to opt out by crafting new policy, my question then, board members and Dr. Scheichel, becomes, when can I file multiple complaint forms? As soon as my son is registered, first day of school, when? Or perhaps I can send an email and submit in writing to the appropriate R C P S administrators and file that my child cannot have access to the ever-growing list of books with vulgar profanity and vivid sex scenes that are available at R C P S school libraries. Can I trust R C P S staff to honor my request? Maybe so, but I'd feel much better if it was policy. This is not a right-wing talking point. This is not about our past, this is about my son and the students here. I'm tired of poking you guys and asking you guys to do something about this. So you guys can contact me after this, or email me, or whatever, but I appreciate your dialogue in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mike Stimple.
A couple days ago, I was excited to see that a member of the school board had attended the annual conference for the Virginia Council of the Social Studies, a professional organization for educators. Then, in a subsequent social media post, they mentioned their disappointment in the keynote speaker because he, among other things, took God's name in vain. In this case, he said a cuss word. What does it mean to take God's name in vain? It simply means to misuse the name of God. It's like when a politician invokes the name of God in a public prayer for votes rather than an earnest attempt at connecting with God. It's like when Attorney General, then Attorney General Jeff Sessions, back in 2018, used Romans Chapter 13 to justify separating children from their parents. That is misusing God's name to justify injustice. That is what I think about when I hear the phrase, "Using God's name in vain." Another comment that the board member took issue, as quoted on their social media page, was this, "If you don't want to teach the truth, get out. If you teach, if you don't teach the truth, then you're committing educational malpractice." I wholeheartedly agree with that statement. I see truth-telling and ensuring that our children get a true and thorough account of history through the public school curriculum as a justice issue. For those who claim Christianity as their faith, justice is a regular theme seen throughout the text of the Bible. That is why it concerns me when a school board member displays open opposition to telling the truth about history. Some seem to prefer a mythical American slash Virginia rather than a real one, which brings me to my next concern, David Barton. That was the name suggested by the school board member for a keynote speaker for the Virginia Council of the Social Studies. Taffed Barton is a pseudo-historian who had a book rejected by a Christian publisher because of its falsehoods. In a video of David Barton posted by the school board member, Barton makes easily debunked claims such as, "A black man was responsible for permanent slavery in America," and "White slavery was common." Instead of promoting people who tell falsehoods, let's advocate for a true and thorough account of history in our public school curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments for the evening. We'll now move on to board member comments, and we're going to start with Mr. Breeden.
Well, it's always great to be at Montevideo Middle School. I happen to, is there anybody else in the audience who attended this building when it was a high school? I guess that makes me one of the oldest, if not the oldest, person anymore. I was part of the last class at Montevideo High School, and there are so many great memories here. And I have been trying to thank, as I, as I sort of wind down my service as a school board member, try to thank those in R C P S, both past and present, who have had a tremendous impact on my life in a positive way. And I think of so many people who have worked in this building, John Kent, the principal here, Beulah Cobbs, Carletta, Blake Moore, Jean Cash, Brian Daniels, so, so many people, Tom Burgess, who had such a tremendous impact on me, and I'll be forever grateful to them. I also would like to thank tonight all of our directors of the different disciplines who have, who have been so helpful and supportive to me. Not to, not to try to single out one, but I've known him the longest, I think, and that's Bo Dickinson. I've never met a finer human being, and the impact that he had on both of my sons in his class was just, they talk about it today, as him being, we see the Inspire Awards, they both talk about how he was one of their favorite teachers. And so he's not here tonight, but thank you, Mr. Dickinson, for the fine person you are and the great work that you do. So if these walls can talk, probably a good thing they can. Thank you, Ms. Lor.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. McWhaken?
Thank you, Chairman Lor. I'd like to begin by talking about the Farm Bureau Women's Committee sponsored a legislative dinner that happened a couple weeks ago, and which I attended, and I want to thank them for the delicious meal and the great discussion that they had about legislation in the Commonwealth of Virginia and the local representatives, with the local representatives who were there. To continue, I went reading again to Riverbend Elementary, such fun. I know, Ms. Lor, you're going to do that tomorrow too, right?
Hopefully.
Next, I attended the Rockingham County Public Community Dialogue, which just happened this past Thursday evening, and the highlight to me was the fact that there were 11th grade students who had presented to us previously on February 13th in attendance, and they each sat at a table and discussed pros and cons, and answered questions, and talked about the school system, and you could see how engaged and dedicated they are in Rockingham County schools and the education that they're getting, and how they want it to be better, just as we all want it to be better and to continue to move forward. And lastly, I'd like to give an update on the superintendent's search. This Friday, March 31st, is the last day for applicants to apply for this position, our superintendent's position. Shortly after that, we will be holding a meeting with Kevin Kastner and Wayne Harris, and they will share with us the applicants, and we look forward to that. And, and once that has happened, then we'll be moving on to the interview process. So that's where we are in the superintendent's search. Thank you, Ms. Lor.
Thank you, Dr. McWhaken. Mr. Cross?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to follow up with Mr. Breeden's comments. I'm thankful to be back here at Montevideo as well. This is where I attended middle school. I didn't attend high school here, but it was middle school, and it was one of my favorite times in my Rockingham County public school experience being here at Montevideo Middle School, and the teachers that I had, like Mr. Nadaski, who became in my 8th grade year, he was our civics teacher as well, was assistant principal, and we would get him off on subjects of talking about all his baseball games that he attended throughout the nation, and him and his wife went to every major league baseball stadium when they were, when they were before, I guess right after he retired or near his retirement. But, and Donna Mathias, she's also a teacher now at Folks Run, and she's got quite a few years in, but Donna Mathias was just an awesome 7th grade English teacher, and I appreciate everything that she's done. I've reached out to her quite a few times throughout the years and just told her, "Thank you for being such an excellent teacher." So Montevideo is a great school, thank you. I'm, the, the second thing I want to say tonight is congratulations to the teachers, Mrs. Fur and Ms. Beck and Ms. Hinkle, for all that they do in our schools and every teacher, and what you do to promote the things that we heard tonight as patience and kindness and caring and building confidence and community sport, and teachers going to ballgames and birthday parties. It's pretty amazing when you hear these things, that teachers are doing that because they have lives just as well as we do. And to take time out to go to someone's game like that, or go to a birthday party, really shows the character and how much they love their job and the kids that are in their classrooms. So thank you to those, I think it's to all our teachers, but especially tonight, thanks for those that I mentioned that received their reward tonight. I also had a chance to go down to Riverbend Elementary School and read last week. I read to the 4th and 5th graders. I did warn them before I read that I read on a 3rd grade level, so I, I did need some help. I'm just joking. It was, it was good, though. I've enjoyed reading more once I got out of school. Didn't like reading when I was in school, but I enjoy reading a lot now, and I enjoyed reading to the kids down at Riverbend. I had a good time down there as well. And last Friday, I did attend the Virginia, let me get this right, the Virginia Council for the Social Studies Conference in Richmond, and I want to say congratulations to Luke Roadcap, who was assistant principal at Elkton Middle School last year, I think maybe the year before. I don't know whether he did two years or just one, but he did such an amazing job. He went to one of his breakout sessions, and he talked about creating a passion for social studies for our, for our kids, and he did a great job. He did come up to me and warn me about a few things, but it wasn't nothing bad, but he did a great job presenting, and it was great to see one of our very own from Rockingham County Public Schools presenting there in Richmond. I did, I was disappointed, as you heard from one of the speakers tonight in public comment, that I was disappointed when I did go to the second keynote speaker that was down there, and really did feel like the speaker was very unprofessional. I worked in law enforcement for 12 years and have been to quite a few professional development trainings, heard quite a few keynote speakers from around keynote speakers from around, from around the country, and if you know, well, if you work in law enforcement or first responders, a lot of times we can have potty mouth. And so, but one thing that the speakers, the keynote speakers, when they got up there to speak, even though they were more likely, they may have said things to one another in certain ways, but when they got in public, they didn't, they didn't speak like they would have to just someone face to face or a friend or something like that. They knew there was a standard, and I was, I was very, I was upset that the standard of professionalism, especially in education, wasn't followed with this keynote speaker. And he did say, "God's name in vain," and I can't, I can't believe that, that anyone would use GD in a public speaking event, especially for education. But not only did he use GD, and you can, we can have a, I do agree with some of the speakers tonight of, of taking God's name in vain as more than just saying GD, but some of the things in which he said. But there were other things that he spoke of that was very inappropriate, really inappropriate. And I want to name a few things that I heard him say. He said, "If you want to indoctrinate our students, send them to me. I will indoctrinate them. White people, parents running around here, dumb A's, wouldn't even have public schools if it wasn't for black people. We can stand up to these foolish parents. If you don't want to teach the truth, get out. If you don't teach the truth, then you're, you're committing educational malpractice." Ron DeSantis doesn't know his GD history. In fact, he went through all the conservative leaders with Donald Trump to our governor Glenn Youngkin and also Ron DeSantis demonizing him as well. You can get around teaching the 16, this is, this is a big one. You can get around teaching the 1619 Project. So he was, he was telling our Virginia educators, "You can get around breaking the law. You can get around teaching divisive curriculum inside of our schools, and this is what you need to do, and if you don't do it, then you're not for the, for, for the cause, and you need to get, you need to get out." That's a wrong message to send educators. And he said, "You can get around teaching the 1619 Project by quoting the USA Today documents. You've got to figure out how to do it. Why do you have to do it?" And he was speaking about the curriculum that had been, has been deemed inherently divisive in Virginia. There was a lot of things in which the speaker said that just was unbelievable, and I spoke with one educator down there, and, and this is why people like me are in public education, sitting on school boards, and hopefully there are a lot more of me coming on the boards around our country. Well, one educator said there while I was there, he said, "This, this is a cancer in my profession. I've been working in this profession for many years," and he said, "I don't know if this is redeemable inside of our profession." He said, "I don't know. You can't, you can't make laws just to ban the stuff because it changes something else," and that's one thing this speaker talked about, you know, that, that the right was able to name CRT and come up with a definition for it before they could get to it. But I was, I was very shocked by the professional, by the, not the professionals, the unprofessionalism that was presented to teachers, and during his speech, there was quite a few. I wish, honestly, I wish I would have walked out sooner, but I wanted to take notes and see exactly what all he was saying. During his speech, there were quite a few educators that did walk out, and I, and they walked out not because they went to never come back, because of what he said and the racist comments that he made. Racism goes both ways, and I wasn't happy at all that we sent our educators down there to listen to keynote speakers like that that got thousands of dollars from Virginia taxpayers to be able to present that kind of information. So, I'm, as a school board member, I'm going to go to these conferences as much as I can because I want to see what our educators are being taught when they're at these, at these events. And I had a good time. I had a good time with Mr. Roadcap in his session, and I just wanted to brag on him tonight of how great a job that he did, but I think that's proper governance when it comes to school board governance, being able to see this stuff and not just hear secondhand information. So, that's all I got tonight, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Falk?
When I walked into the school this evening and was presented by the wonderful, wonderful artwork, the visual artwork that's on display in the lobby, it, it brought back thoughts of when Mr. Breeden and I first came on the board in January of 1996. The first meeting was right in the, the heat of budget discussion, and a lot of the presenters who presented to the board and spoke to the board that evening were asking for more investment by Rockingham County Public Schools in the art programs, and especially with the focus on getting art teachers in elementary schools. And it just, we have come a long way. We've always had good art programs in the high schools and some good art programs in the middle schools, but elementary schools, it was pretty much up to the classroom teachers to deal with art. And I think, again, it just, standing there looking at those pictures this evening and then listening to the awards this evening, just, it makes my heart feel good. We've come a long way. All boards since then have really pushed to, to get the arts before the children, because art is, the arts, the performing arts and the visual arts are what adds the richness to life throughout your life, and a lot of children, if not exposed to art in school, they wouldn't get it. So, we're doing a good job, and I just want to thank you, and that's my highlight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Falk. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of jump off of everybody's comments tonight. Thank you, guys, for the, the walk down memory lane with this building. It's definitely an, an institution in our community, and when I think about my childhood and coming here, I remember I wanted to throw up every time I came because I was doing 4H presentations. I learned my public speaking, I honed my public speaking skills here in this school. And there's, I, I am so in awe of our students who performed and are on the state level because it's scary. It's scary when you're a middle school student to get up in front of people and talk, and, and those contests were held in this school for me. So, and then, Mr. Falk, you're absolutely right. The, the arts are super important. I believe every child needs a reason to get up out of bed and come to school every day. And if it's the arts, if it's CTE, like we're getting ready to get a, a presentation about, if it's their English teacher, if it's because their teacher told them, "I'm thankful for you." These are the reasons our kids come to school, and it's because of our staff and, and our hearts. So, thank you to everyone who's working super hard in Rockingham County's public schools to make meaningful relationships and meaningful experiences for our children. And I'm looking forward to seeing some of those. I'm reading this week. We have another musical coming up this week, so there's lots of great things going on. So, please get out and experience your local public school. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Scheichel.
Thank you, Chair Lor. First, Jackie, Brad, and Will, thank you for hosting us. It's always great to be at Montevideo Middle School. My kids went here, so this is part of home for me, too. And, you know, Dr. McQuilkin had talked about the respectful community dialogue. That was the culmination of a year and a half of work. There were a lot of people there for the first time, and it was an amazing process and event where anyone could, you know, sign up to attend the event, and it was recognized nationally. So, NPR had a national, nationally broadcast segment on this process, on all things considered. So, that's certainly the recognition that an attempt to get to a point where, even when we disagree, we can do so respectfully, that that's being recognized is a good thing. And the students, just like, you know, we talked about when we had our Teacher of the Year Celebration or when we had the Inspire Awards, you know, they, the students talk about wanting to be cared about as human beings, and that's, that certainly came through strongly about mental health and about a number of other things. My other highlight is that I'm glad our social studies teachers had a chance to go to Richmond to the conference for the Virginia Council of the Social Studies. It was an opportunity for our teachers to bring their skills and their information to a statewide audience. Our teachers are very much, you know, as history teachers, able to decide, you know, what activities, what inquiries, what information focus works with their students in Rockingham. They bring back new ideas that they learn from others. They're very discerning when it comes to making decisions about what, what is good for students in Rockingham County. And Luke Roadcap certainly is one of the educators who is a great social studies teacher. I will also say that the fourth grade teachers, we had a team of fourth grade teachers there, they certainly would have appreciated a visit as well. Their work is actually also nationally recognized and is actually on the cover of this month's Social Studies and the Young Learner. So, they're doing the work, you know, an inquiry around Barbara Johns. So, again, we've had conversations about this. You've had presentations on this, and so these opportunities are great for our teachers, and again, they make, we expect them to, and they are very good at making sound professional judgment when it comes to bringing information back that works well in Rockingham County schools. So, that's certainly a highlight for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel, and I'm going to ask for John Spot again. Sorry. Is there any way that we can get a copy of that publication so we can read the article? Is there a link?
I'll have to check whether it's available online. I would assume so, but I'll see if I can get you a copy.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. That concludes our board member comments for the evening. We're now going to move into our action items, and the first item in our action item agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
The approval of the minutes is presented.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? If not, we'll vote on approving the minutes as presented, the March 13th minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same side. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have our committee appointments. Board members, we've had discussions one-on-one on this, but let's just go over it. Or, do you want to do it? Because it does say the superintendent's recommendation.
Yeah, my recommendation is based on my conversation with Chair Lor, and so according to the information she has provided to me, I recommend the following committee appointments. Again, this was postponed back in January to the meeting tonight. Mr. Cross for the Extension Leadership Council, Mr. Falk for the Shenandoah Valley Special Educational Regional Program Board, Dr. McQuilkin for Massanuton Governor's School Board, Ms. Lor for the MTC Foundation Board, Ms. Lor and Mr. Breeden for the Liaison Committee with the Board of Supervisors, and Dr. McQuilkin on the Rockingham Educational Foundation Board, ex officio.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel.
And I recommend approval of those committee appointments.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Do we have a motion?
I'm going to follow the superintendent's recommendations for the 2023 committee appointments.
Thank you. Mr. Falk, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Is there any discussion?
How do we get in contact with someone?
I can provide you with the name of somebody to talk to there, and they should also reach out to you as well when they schedule a meeting. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the, supporting the superintendent's recommendation for the 2023 committee appointments, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same side. Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Field trips. Dr. Scheichel?
Board members, I have a number of field trips for your approval tonight. Spotswood High School, the DECA IDCD Conference, April 21st through the 26th, two students to Orlando, Florida, TSA State Convention, May 4th through the 7th, six students to Hampton, Virginia, and then J. Frank Hilliard Middle School, FFA 4H Horse Center, March 31st through April 1st, nine students to Lexington, Virginia, and the FFA State Convention, June 20th through the 23rd, 10 students to Virginia Tech in Blacksbrook, Virginia, and I recommend approval of those field trips.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Do I have our motion?
I have motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion regarding these field trips? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on the field trips as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carries unanimously. That concludes our action items for the evening. We'll now move on into our informational items and begin with the superintendent's budget recommendations. Can you get around?
Yeah, I got it. You guys can ask questions.
Chair Lor, members of the board, members of the public, as is our annual custom this time of the year, I'm presenting the superintendent's budget recommendation for the next school year. We had a conversation about this last time and about the difficulty that we're facing in terms of having a good understanding of what state revenue we may expect, and I don't expect you to read through all this, but there are basically all these steps that the budget process takes, and normally at this time of the year, especially in the second year of the biennium, we would be, you know, having conversations where at least the conference committee negotiations would be underway to finalize the budget, and we simply are not where we usually are. So, right now, the General Assembly basically sent a stopgap measure to the governor that the governor then approved, but that's for fiscal year '23, so the year that's ending on June 30th, and for next year, we're basically still in the dark, other than the fact that we're in the second year of the biennium. And so there were lots and lots of amendments to the fiscal year '23 budget, but at this point, we don't quite know yet what the budget for next year is actually going to be because it's highly likely that there will be some adjustments to what was passed a year ago. So there were millions of dollars in adjustments for the current year, and then at this point, that simply hasn't been a meeting. The conference committee members were supposed to at least begin negotiations next week and, and two weeks, but that's also now been put on hold. So, there was an article published on Friday where even the negotiations were paused as a result of economic news, and so even though the state has, you know, they have $4.5 billion to do something with or to just hold it back. The governor wants, you know, billion-dollar tax cut. The Senate wants more money for education, and so the difference, again, even between the House and Senate budgets, was more than $5 million for Rockingham County. And so, again, we're kind of on hold, and there are some legislators who have said, you know, there may not be a state budget until June. So, as a result, we have to make sure that we use a conservative number and make good decisions, you know, with what we know is at least that, that base level of funding that we would have. As always, we look at our goals and values. You know, we want to have our budget reflect what we're trying to accomplish. That includes, you know, providing support to students. You heard that earlier, you know, whether that's for Yale students, whether that's for students who struggle with mental and behavioral health issues. We want to make sure that we have the support in place where it is needed. So, not every student needs the most intensive supports, but when they do need it, it should be available. We do want to get better, when we said this last year, when we know better, we do better, and we continue to investigate, you know, better ways to provide education to our students. With a national teacher shortage, teacher recruitment and retention is critical. I just looked at data the other day. Since 2008, how many school divisions in Virginia have lost dozens of teachers? We're still in a good position. So, we've been able to retain teachers. We've been able to bring on really good educators, and we want to continue that because our students deserve it, right? So, pay scales, pay when we look at inflation. As I said last time, you know, if you went just by the cost of living, salaries today are about 10% lower than they were in 2008, and inflation is pretty high. So, again, we have to at least make an effort to increase pay where we can, and then there's also some scales that are simply out of whack when we compare them to surrounding school divisions. And as always, this is a collaboration, of course, with the county leadership, you know, the Board of Supervisors and the county administrator and county finance director, you know, they work with us closely. It's a process that works differently here because of those relationships where we don't make each other look bad in public, where there's a lot of conversation around what schools need and what the county can afford. And then, of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, and none of this would happen without Cheryl Mast, who works tirelessly all winter long and Cheryl Mast, who works tirelessly all winter long and just makes sure that we, that we are in a good position and responsibly spend money, right? So thank you to Cheryl absolutely for everything you continue to do to put us on sound financial footing. Again, when we talk about our, our values, our goals, we've talked about this many times, relationships, community, purposeful learning, scholarship. We want to make sure that our students don't just get content knowledge that they can memorize, but that they are equipped with all the tools they need to be successful in their life in the 21st century. And again, that they can work with others across cultural boundaries, that they can communicate in all kinds of different ways, whether that's face-to-face conversation, which is obviously oftentimes something we need to now focus on, but also, you know, solid and ethical digital communication, critical thinking, creativity, citizenship. These are all key pieces of what we do. And it is important for our teachers that they have the resources to really, again, improve our students' ability in the five Cs. When we talk about tiered systems of support, this is, you know, every year, this chart has changed. We started this years ago, and it looked very, very different, but it was always based on best practice research, on bringing everyone in the field to the table to allow our psychologists, our BCPAs, our behavior specialists, our social workers, our teachers, administrators to be at the table when we talk about how we want to build out our support system. And you'll see that reflected a little bit in the budget, but it is all about, you know, that support system that helps teachers deal with some of the issues that they face on a daily basis so they can focus on their core tasks. So for example, compared to last year, what you see now is in each middle school, a restorative practices specialist, again, to talk about how we can get students, all students, to be successful and to help them when they struggle, whether it's with mental health or with behaviors, right? We have, still you see two elements there that are still in white, so the strong starts programs. Again, that's really, really tough to build out, and we focus on making the two that we have really successful before we can consider an expansion. And so that's not in this year's budget. Letters, when we talk about implementation of new programs based on best practice, one of the hardest things we've ever asked teachers to implement, because they just came out of a pandemic, and then we said literacy cannot wait. And we had the evidence. We'd run a small pilot project at Wayland, and so we said, we need to do this. And, but when you ask teachers to really do something that is so different for them, the supports have to be there. So last year's budget, you know, included money for coaches to help teachers, but also, and you'll see a reflection of this in the budget, we made sure that there were additional assistants in our elementary schools so that teachers had some time that they could work with the other teachers on that analysis, on planning, on learning about this. And it is, you know, we were simply ahead of what is now the law. So Virginia Literacy Act now makes the science of reading basically the mandatory approach. And so we're in good shape there. But again, that will continue to involve lots and lots of effort, because every year you have new first-year teachers who haven't been educated on this. So we need to provide that. And then the following year, then second year, while others are again in first year, until really all universities catch up to this. But just in terms of what we've done, we had a small pilot in 2020, 2021, and then we started with volume one. And then during the current school year, all returning teachers in K through five were trained in the second volume of letters, and new teachers then were trained in volume one. And that's going to continue, because that's what often happens. You do your two years of training, but then what about the teachers that haven't been trained that come in? So there has to be ongoing development for those that come in and has to be customized, because some schools may not have anyone who's not been trained. Others may have multiple teachers. When we look at just the initial data, there's so much information about the impact of it across the different grade levels. This is one of the simpler ones, but it makes the point. Fall 2020, before we implemented, we had 30% of our K-2 students below benchmark in the fall on PALS. Fall 2021 is when we started with the program. It had increased to 40%, partly pandemic-related, of course. And after one year of implementation, where we gave grace to teachers, you know, to progress not at the same pace as those who were just running with it. And so partial implementation, in addition to PALS not even being aligned with letters, we now have, we had fall benchmark data that was better than prior to the pandemic. So early results are really, really encouraging. And again, this was difficult, but our teachers showed, you know, that they can do this, and they've been tremendously successful. But of course, it's an ongoing process. You know, we want to make sure that the support continues to be there. We talked about this last year too, our Learning 2025 Initiative. We are one of 160 or so National Demonstration Districts out of 10,000 school divisions. We have resources from Learning 2025, Build Connections. We actually changed the cohort that we are part of to what's called the Workforce Redesign Cohort. So as we have the national teacher shortage, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we work with people who have ideas on how you can maybe restructure the learning environment, even if you face an environment where you have fewer teachers available. We'd love to have, you know, the same number or a higher number of teachers, but we have to think about how maybe, especially when we're a project, when we support project-based environments, how that can be done a little bit differently. And that's also part of the JMU Lab School Project. So we, the decision about starting the first lab school, there have been a number of planning grants. Most of the planning grant projects actually looked to JMU to see how JMU is trying to implement this with Rockingham. I was still waiting, there's, I had a meeting with some of the old guard at DUE, I would say, in the Policy Department, who were throwing roadblocks. And there are some delays just in the decision-making process. I got a very nice call from Governor Youngkin, Secretary of Education, Amy Gidera, who is fully supportive of this process. And so we'll see where it goes. Obviously, there are some timelines in place, but we also want to, you know, look in that direction anyway. So to make sure that we have the opportunity to have more cross-curricular projects that are project-based. So when we talk about how the budget actually shapes out, well, first, in terms of retention and recruitment, we are planning to give a 5% raise when it comes to all the salary scales. So hourly is always different, you know, they're adjusted at times when we can and usually in much bigger jumps. But when we talk about our salary scales, a 5% increase across the board. It's very much in line with what we're seeing in all the surrounding divisions. I believe Harrisonburg's proposal was 5%. Augusta County was 5%. It's what we see. And the reason is that that second year of the biennium budget included state funds for a 5% raise. So it is at that level that we can get state funds. But again, given the uncertainty, we certainly have some ideas of what to do if we do get more money, as we actually expect. But the cost for that alone is 5.5 million. Teacher assistant and behavior assistant scales, we did a comparison with surrounding school divisions, and so that's a significant adjustment that will cost us about $1 million. But we want to make sure that we provide that, right? So even if there's no additional money from the state, we can afford this. And those teacher assistants and behavior assistants, they work so hard, and we definitely, you know, we look good in comparison when we look at the surrounding school divisions. We're not at the top of the list usually, but we are competitive, and it's a great environment in Rockingham County to work. But in some, again, as we have done over the years, for example, with clerical staff and with bus drivers and with others, we adjust these as we can. And so for teacher assistants, that's about $1 million. Hourly substitute rate from $12 to $13, that's going to come anyway with minimum wage. And then a substitute pay increase. So what we want to try again is to focus on substitutes we already have and to have a process where we can encourage them to substitute more often. And so there's an incentive program that we are proposing where after certain thresholds are reached, so if you substitute this many days, there's a bonus payment, and then again, different threshold. So rather than, and we will continue, of course, to try to find more people who want to sub, but again, that's tricky. But then another avenue is to encourage, encourage those who are subbing to sub more often. Instruction, $290,000 increase. These are, you know, not really things we just can't do, right? We can't say, no, we're not paying the regional fees for the regional program for our special education students. And we have a project with Blue Ridge Community College for career coaches, and so there's an additional cost there. Academic support, over the years, we've moved a lot of items that generally we asked families to pay for. So for example, you know, we had class fees where, you know, students would pay, you have class dues that they would pay, and ultimately that would pay for graduation. We had some other fees that we eliminated. We said that now that all four of the high schools will have graduation at JMU, again, this isn't something we want to say to families, hey, over the years, you just have to pay for that, because that's really what happened. And so we're eliminating those dues for the families, and we are adding that to our budget to pay for the graduations at JMU. Transportation and maintenance increases that are largely driven by simply unavoidable cost increases, right? Whether that's fuel, whether that's parts, those are in there as well. We expect health insurance increase of approximately $1.3 million. Okay, so that, that's an additional expense. Personnel, almost $2 million. You see the one at the top, 49 assistants. So when we implemented letters, we made 49 assistants full-time. They were part-time assistants, and we made them full-time. Our schools have begged us to make sure that they can keep those assistants, how, you know, in different support positions, you know, all the, there's certainly some flexibility for each school, but we also have expectations so that they don't turn into just basically subs that are available every day, right? And previously, we funded, that was one of the few things we funded with ESAR, that was ongoing funds, where we used one-time pandemic funds for an ongoing expense. And so we moved that into the regular budget, because ESAR money is running out. And then you see, you know, again, the support system and support for students with needs, special education teachers and assistants, a reading teacher, TLC assistants and teachers, Title I assistants, a slight increase in fine arts personnel to make sure that we have equitable services to our students, behavior support, speech pathologist, three EL teachers. So you can see almost all of these positions are for specific needs, whether that's for reading support, whether that's for EL students, or whether that's for special education students, and then help for the teachers in terms of the assistants that are available. The one central office position, we talked about this last time, we have to make a decision now because it affects other positions that we're posting. And so because accreditation takes truancy numbers into account, which, you know, in some ways, we can't really control in the end unless we go and, you know, just basically bring kids to school, you know, we have the buses that go, but if the kids don't get on the bus and they're not in school, it is held against us. And so that's an issue that many, many school divisions across the state, you know, are facing now. And because of the accountability piece, we need to make sure we put some additional effort in there. But again, that's not a position that will require full funding for a supervisor position, because some of the money comes from restructuring some other positions where we can shuffle some responsibilities around. And then we still have some enrollment positions that's always based on, you know, where we need a teacher based on class sizes, for example. For a while, our class sizes, you know, we had class sizes that would go above our limits, and an assistant, for example, may end up in that classroom. Over the last few years, we've brought all our elementary classrooms below the threshold that exists for class sizes. Again, you need to find the teachers for that, and that's why recruiting and retaining good educators is critical, but we're certainly, you know, doing a good job there. And so when we see some of our schools, you'll see some redistricting conversation here in the next month or so as well, because it, you know, when you have a school that has 28 students in each grade level, and now you have to split it, you end up with a school that has, you know, 14 in each class, because you're not going to send 28 into a classroom. Then you have some schools that simply have these small class sizes. And so with redistricting, if you move some additional students into that school, that class size goes closer maybe to where we want it to be in terms of staffing, and it alleviates class size pressures in another school. So we can, you know, again, release some pressure on class sizes also by redistricting responsibly, right? When we have these areas where class sizes are really, really small. Admin interns, that's a small expense to make our admin interns 11 months. They do work in the summer at this point, but they're on a teacher's scale, so they're 10-month, on a 10-month scale, but work 11, so they should be paid for that. MTC is an increase of about $290,000, and so for a total of $172,55,317. That's an increase of about $7.6 million over last year. Again, remembering that the 5% raise alone is five and a half of that. So again, these aren't huge increases, and that is driven by, again, inflation and salary increases. When we talk about revenue, so non-resident tuition and Medicaid reimbursements, we're seeing a slight increase in our, for next year, $763,000. State revenue, again, that's the big unknown, but what we're budgeting with is what we received from the state as an expected distribution based on the second year of the biennium, with some adjustments for ADM numbers. So the increase there would be $5.9 million in state revenue. Federal revenue, $1.35 million less, largely driven because ESAR is going away. So those one-time funds are coming out of the budget and a few other things. And then a slight increase in Title I funding. To balance the budget, it requires a local share of education of $73,866,510, which is an increase of $3 million. And so for this, again, we've had conversations with county, with the County Administrator, Finance Director, to make sure that we have an understanding of, you know, where the local share could come in. And again, the budget is exactly the same you saw earlier in terms of expenses, you know, revenue has to match expenses. Two others, capital project fund. You know, it's a little bit unusual to see cash reserves of $15.5 million. We have projects at Broadway High School, at Elkton Elementary School, and then also, this will later be followed by McAke'sville, but Linville Edum Elementary Septic System. I know it seems decades ago, but we're still working on that project. So $500,000 set aside for the new septic so Linville Edum can remain open. And all of that is funded with cash reserves. And so I do want to point that out, right? When people say, you know, we're not responsible with the money we have, no, we were actually able to set aside $15.5 million to expand Broadway High School and do some other things with money we saved, right? So it's one-time money, so that's why, you know, we can't just say, oh, let's put that into salaries, because it's one-time money. But we, we made every effort, again, Cheryl was instrumental in that, to make sure that we are fiscally responsible and don't ask county taxpayers for this money. Cafeteria fund, balance, it has to be balanced, it's self-funding. There's a, federal regulations require that when you charge less than what the federal reimbursement is, that they require an adjustment of the, of the cost. And so our student breakfast will go up from $1.25 to $1.50, student lunch from $2.40 to $2.50, and there are some adjustments in that compensation and benefits line for cafeteria staff. So cafeteria managers, cafeteria workers. So that's a balanced fund here. Now what that means for the Board of Supervisors, again, total local request that I will forward to Mr. King later this week, and then talk to the Board of Supervisors in a presentation in April of $73,866,510. And this is again for fiscal year '22. When we look at, even with state funding having increased, when we adjust this for inflation, the state's share, not only has state funding per pupil for Rockingham County decreased by 8.1% adjusted for inflation. So the state is doing extremely well financially. We're not back on a per pupil basis where we were in 2008, right? With state funding. And as you can see at the bottom, the local share was 56.6% in 2008, was 37.3% in 2008, 2009, and is now 41.3%. So what the state didn't provide, our locality has been very generous to Rockingham County schools. And again, it is because of the relationship. And again, it is because of the relationship that's been built for more than a decade, right? So these are relationships that go way back. Next steps, on Wednesday, the board will meet at Central Office at 4 o'clock for a vote on the budget request. I will present to the Board of Supervisors on April 12th. It's a little bit later than usual, but there are, you know, we do have time. I can make the request before my presentation. And so we coordinated that with county staff. And then, again, the state budget may not be finalized until June. But we want to make it clear that our goal, if the conference committee meets and if additional state funds are available, anywhere, if we look at the two budgets, you know, either nothing or 5 million dollars more. If the, if there's a compromise and, for example, the support cap is lifted, could be 3 million dollars more. If this is what happens, our effort would be to improve the pay raise from 5% to 7%. And so if we get 2.2 million dollars more, that's where that would go. If it is more than that amount, then additional projects, you know, would be possible, right? So we want to make sure that that's clear. Because we did put the money in to keep assistants full time. We can't wait with that decision until June. We have the pay increase for assistants now. And everyone's getting 5% at least. But we're committed with, at least in this recommendation, that there's an understanding. There's not a vote on this at this point, but if additional funds from the state come, that the first process would be to get that pay raise to 7% and only then to consider other spending items after that. If you have any questions, I'll gladly try to answer those or ask Cheryl to.
Members, do you have any questions?
Right, so just, it's pretty much the same process as last year. As you know, Mr. Cross, the state has grant availability. And so if the board wants to add additional SROs, as I had said, you know, it might be a good idea to invite Sheriff Hutchison to, again, speak to the board, maybe in May, and to talk about his experience, his view of the additional SROs that we've added. So we've added four. And it's important to remember the grant money does run out. So at some point then, to retain those, there has to be an increase in, in local money to make that happen. And any conversation to be had with the sheriff about additional SROs could come at that point. And so it will very likely be possible, if that is the board's desire, that Sheriff Hutchison can, again, look at grant funding, grant funding from the state to have at least those first two years of any additional SROs paid for with state safety grants. Last year that happened, grants became available, I believe, in July. And then Sheriff Hutchison applied for those. And that's how the four SRO positions that we added were added. And so if that, again, is available, certainly my comment would simply be that rather than paying for that locally in this budget when state money is available, that does not burden local taxpayers at this point.
It's not a burden, sorry. It's not a burden on local taxpayers for public safety for their children in schools. And you're right, we have, we only have 10 SROs for 23 schools in Rockham County. So I asked for four because before we got the four, which the board didn't want the four, but we did get the four after the massacre that happened down in Texas. And we added four to cover all of our, our middle schools. And thank you to Deputy Good, who's the SRO now here at Montevideo Middle School. He's doing a great job. So, but now we finally have, in Rockham County, we finally have all four middle schools covered with an SRO. Before, the SRO would cover the high school, its middle school, and all its feeder schools, elementary schools that go up into there. And so even today, in Tennessee, I believe it was, with another school shooting and another year coming to pass and approving another budget here in Rockham County, we're not seeing the value of SROs in our schools. And if we did, because I say that, if we did see the value of SROs in our schools, we would start making sure that we wouldn't looking for state funds to cover them upfront. We would make, we would look at our budget and we begin to say, if they're that important, let's make sure they get into our budget and let's vote on that. And so now, all of our elementary schools aren't covered. I asked for four because then that, that way we could get an SRO that would at least, at this time, cover a elementary school and float between those schools. Or if one of the SROs were also out at the middle school or high school, they could also float in them because they take days off, they're in court, they're in training. A lot of times they're not there at the schools. And so if we could add four more, one to each school district, it would help them out because the middle school SROs and the high school SROs are still sharing the elementary responsibility as well. And so that's why I asked for the four SROs. And I would hope from the board that we would find a way to get them into this year's school budget. And, yeah, I'd like to see us as a school board, get that worked into our school budget.
Last year's SROs weren't added because of the massacre in Texas. During the budget conversation in February and March, we had already talked about potential additions of SROs, but that it would be fiscally more responsible to use state funds for it. And that's exactly how it played out. So rather than saying we're asking local taxpayers to fund those, we have money that does not cost our local taxpayers the additional money for at least two years and is funded with state funds at that point. And again, that's the same conversation this year. I'm not talking about it whether SROs are a burden to local taxpayers in terms of, should we have SROs or should we not have, have SROs? But again, the conversation is about who should pay for it if state money is available. So if state money is available and local money is available, should we take the state funds that aren't then solely coming from Rockham County taxpayers? Just like we did last year. So state grant money being available, the safety grants will likely, again, be available this year. So the sheriff can apply. And for two years, any additional SROs that the board wants to have could be funded that way. And so the burden, simply meaning that whether we paid, we ask our local taxpayers to pay for all of it for two years, or to say, hey, for two years, the state's going to pay for it. Obviously, pay state taxes, but if we don't take the money, someone else will. It's simply a conversation around not spending local money when we don't have to. The decision isn't whether or not to have SROs. The decision is whether to use state funds as they become available or to use local funds.
When does that grant run out? The four that we added this year? When will we have to add those to the budget?
At least for two years and then we'll have to wait and see. It's not clear that, that those funds then expire. There's certainly, again, the General Assembly can make decisions. Governor Youngkin had indicated last year that he would support having an SRO in every school. If that becomes a state requirement, it would be unlikely that there would be no money because it is almost like SOQ positions where the state requires you to have certain positions. And then the state at least would pay likely the state share of it. So we'd have to wait and see. There was no legislation that passed this General Assembly session that made that mandatory. But again, next year is another big budget year and so it's certainly possible that that comes. So the current one runs out in two years. But again, could be extended, that's certainly possible.
So if it runs out, whomever is in your position will come to the board and ask for funds to extend that?
That would be the only way, unless state funds become available or the grant is extended, that would be the only way to maintain those SROs, just like, you know, the SROs we had prior to the additional four, to add local funds to pay for the school resource officers. It's similar to having ESAR funds for the 49 assistants, right? So at 600,000, whatever the exact amount is, to have 49 assistants go from part-time to full-time, right? Those were one-time funds, so they're, or two-year funds, whatever it is. But when that runs out, you know, if you spend too much money where one-time funds are used for ongoing expenses, you know, you face what the school division's called, this fiscal cliff. So all of a sudden, you need to spend the money that you got from another level. If you want to keep those positions, you got to find it locally. And that's why we were very careful with how much ESAR money we spent. This is similar. So if the board were to add, you know, 20 SROs and just say, well, we'll get state money, now you have to, to your standard route, find enough local funds to pay for 20. Paying for four is a different conversation. So again, as the state budget develops, it is something that the board will have to consider, right? So they're free in that sense for two years, right? But there has to be, that has to be on the horizon. At some point then, that money has to be added in terms of local funds. Again, unless something changes. We'll know more in a year or two, you know, whether that becomes a requirement. You know, it could be that the requirement is a school security officer and that there are funds for that, but that your SROs count or such. So there's so many different ways that this could play out. But there certainly has to be awareness of it.
And again, Ms. Lohr, this comes down to a board decision of what we want to put in our budget. This is a board's decision, not superintendent, the board's decision. If we see that adding four new SROs is important, then as a board, then we agree on that and we make sure they're in our budget. And right now...
But the four that we currently have
Absolutely.
will have to go into our budget.
Absolutely. Every, and, and, and...
Unless there's their funds.
Absolutely. It's, and until we, we take this matter serious, it's, it's a problem. Parents want to see an SRO in their schools. You talk to parents, they want to see an SRO in their elementary schools. They want to see them in there for their safety. They worry about their kids when they go to school for these school shootings that we see all across the nation. You got to go all the way back to 1950 till you find a child that's died in a school fire in North America. Not just America, but in North America. And why is that? The reason is if, because we figured out, hey, we got to stop making schools like matchboxes and stop building them out of wood because when they catch on fire, a lot of kids die. And so now, you look in the schools, they're made with concrete, they're made with brick. You got to have, anything that hangs on the wall has to be fire retardant. And so it's almost impossible to burn a new school down. And that's why we haven't had a child die in North America till all the way back in 1950. Now, I'm not saying that an SRO in every school is going to end that, but it sure does make your chances of a school shooting at your school. It makes that, that number go way down. And so to see a sheriff deputy car at every school, to know that there's an SRO in there that's going to have a weapon, if you bring in a weapon in there to try to harm our staff and our kids, it makes the public feel a whole lot safer and it makes the parents feel a whole lot safer. And it is our responsibility as a school board to do that. And I'm not asking for 13, 13 this year in the budget. I'm just asking for four more and to continue doing this until we get all of our schools covered and not have to wait for grant funding from the state to make this a priority for our schools in Rockingham County. And it's on our shoulders as a school board to make that happen or not happen. So I'm just asking tonight that the board would really consider. I know this hasn't been a popular topic throughout the years because until last year, there's only been three SROs that's been added to our school system in 20-plus years.
And I am trying to consider it.
Yeah.
And we did add four the past year. And what's the cost? What was the cost of the four? And I'm expecting next year, somebody to come and say, now we have to put that in our budget.
Absolutely.
So what's the cost?
We're putting, we're adding 3.0, we're adding 3-plus million dollars to our budget this year. And where the superintendent's recommendation for personnel is on this page here. And so yes, it's going to cost us to add SROs to our schools.
Do you know what the number is?
That, how much it's going to cost?
How much does four SROs cost?
Well, you're looking at, at least for the SRO in and of itself, you're looking at an average of 45,000 just for his average salary. And then you're looking at also the cost for him to, for his insurance. You're looking at also what it costs to, to clothe him and put him in a, in a car. So there's funding there also, I believe, that comes from the county as well. That kind of, that kind of offsets a little bit of that, if I'm not, is that right? Does the county, do they pass some money in their budget to help like with cars and things like that for the, for the housing of a deputy? Okay, so we're just looking at, is it?
Yep, it's about 75...
208,000?
75 to 80,000.
All right. So...
So where do we get to 300,000?
Well, we're, we're adding four music teachers, it looks like. Is that 210,000? Or is that the, no, I'm sorry, that's a three ELL teacher, sorry. So, I mean, what I'm saying, Chairman Lohr, is that when we see that it's something that we want as a board, then we'll put that in our budget. We'll make sure that's covered. Because there's things that we want, we see that we need for the school this year for our, for our budget and we're putting that in.
But my point is, this book, what was this, 16 million dollars this year of stuff we want? I don't want to cut any of it. But we do have to make some really tough decisions.
And the, the SROs is what we need, not just what we want. What, what do we need for public safety for, to make sure our kids are safe? One of the things that came out of the, the student, what I thought was very interesting when they came to the school board meeting last, back in Broadway at J-Frank, when they came, two of the top things they said was they were concerned with student safety. And so the students formed, they had a, for the females, they had a self-defense class out at East Rockham High School. And then the second thing was they talked about how much the SROs made them feel safe while they're at school. And so this is a topic, this is something that's on our kids' minds being at school in our generation. And this also, I'm sure, will add to the, the mental health as well, is them feeling safe inside of our schools. And so it's not just a want, in my opinion, it's a need. It's better to be proactive instead of reactive. And I, I, that's what I would hope that the board would want to see, that they, they are necessary components within our schools.
And I don't disagree with you, but, and it does bring me to my question. The part where we figure out what, the bottom of the last slide, can you go back? Additional projects, only once the 7% raise is possible. One of the projects that I really liked that didn't make the list was doors and key card doors, right? And that was 500,000 to upgrade all, I mean, shoot. Ooh, I guess that's a bad choice of words. Darn it. The, the exterior doors. We want to fix those so that they're keyed, I mean, that they're not keyed, that we have badge access so that we can limit people. But that, that didn't make the budget either. But how do we decide which additional projects are going to go if we get any money? And is there any hope left for that key card budget item?
I think that's a matter for board discussion as, as we know what additional funds are available, you know.
As an SRO, I know that there are a lot of keys that are inside of our community of, of coaches and people in the community just have a key. And so I thought that was a great idea too, for security reasons, to have all of our exterior doors covered where we could do away with the, with the keys getting into our schools. So that's another thing. Again, these are things that the, the school board has to look at and say, what's important for us to be in the budget? And then we, we present that and say, we, we look at superintendent, we're just like, we want this in the budget. So again, this is a school board decision on what goes in the budget. And I would, I would like that idea to be in there. I'd definitely like to have my four SROs in there as well. So, thank you.
It should not go without restating the significance of being able to renovate a high school out of money that's been saved. I, I can't remember that ever happening, that, that we've been able to take on a project like that as a one-time project. And so kudos to, to the staff and the leadership team for the way that you have handled that responsibility. And to be able to look at that is just, is just absolutely incredible. And my, what I would like to ask of my colleague is... And my, what I would like to ask of my colleague is if we're talking about those two projects, $500,000 and $300,000, and I'm not asking you to do it right now, but if, I, I'd like to, I'd like to know what you think, where that $800,000 should come from out of this. And I, I'm not, I'm not saying you don't know, I'm not saying-
No, we just, that's our responsibility.
Well, and that's-
It's a good question. It's a good question. The answer to questions is if we look at the budget, what's proposed and say, is public safety, is it on our list?
Okay.
Then look, okay, to be able to make our budget work, we've got to take these things out that we want.
Right, right.
These become a wish list now.
Right.
This becomes a priority. So that's how you do it. It's a good question.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm, and I'm asking if, and, and you can share it with me personally if you want. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just asking, what would you see in here that would constitute that $800,000?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and that's, that's kind of-
Yeah, and I think that's, sorry about that. But I think that's- That's the importance of the school board, of all of us, like five of us, because we really, even having more two-on-two meetings to talk face-to-face and, and say, what's important to us in this school board budget? And a lot of that, you know, they've done a great job, the staff, you guys have done a great job, but a lot of it really don't get our, our, our input with us talking back and forth. And that's what I've seen about coming on the board, is that we don't have enough input back and forth with one another. So I would say in the future, or even now, I mean, we're not approving the budget tonight, but maybe we could go, we could go meet and have more two-on-twos with each other and say, what's really important to make sure we get into this budget? And then look at it and say, okay, what would you take out? Like you're saying, like, what would you take out of this because this becomes now a priority over these wish list items that have come? So it's a good question. I think the way we fix that is we come together more as a board and we have more two-on-two meetings and talk about the budget. And, because it's a big budget, right? I mean, where this is a big responsibility that we do as the school board members, is approve this, this budget for our community. And so, but that's a good question, Mr. Breeden, and I think maybe, maybe we could come together and have more, ask the board for more two-on-two meetings before we approve this budget and, and look at what, if we, as a board, if we say, man, we really believe that the doors are an issue, we'd like to fix that because there's a lot of keys in our community, the people that have keys. And if, if the SROs are important, four SROs are important, what do we have to cut to get there?
Every, every year, I would say that the budget that I vote for represents a partial list of my priorities, right? I mean, it is not all-inclusive of my priorities. And because they're not in there does not mean they are not priorities, that they don't fall on that list of things that are important to me. So, you know, I, I, I just, you know, education is our, is our number one business. And I, I used to always quote Franklin Roosevelt at the beginning of, of budget season where he said, "The true measure of our success is not whether we give more to those who already have plenty, but whether we give enough to those who have too little." And I think we have to continue to look at assistance to help with kids learn to read. I think we need to be looking at, at all of these things, including safety. And so all I would, all I would ask is that, is that in, instead of us talking in general terms, tell me specifically where, where that 800,000 would come from and I, and-
That's a good question. I think, I think we can get there if we meet more on two-on-two meetings.
I look forward, I look forward to hearing from you on that.
Absolutely. I think the other, the other thing here on my list, Mr. Breeden, right here, if you look, was the 5%, like, I think you said the last meeting too, we want to see the 7%, not the 5%. So this goes also to the 7% raise for our teachers, is in fact, what's in our budget? Because you just said, education is very important.
Right.
I want to see their pay be increased. What's in our budget that we can take out and not add to, but how can we add to their salary? Because we want to be a destination division, continue as a destination, destination division. And teachers, the teachers are willing to leave the city to come to the county because of the discipline issues that they're facing in the city. And there are good teachers, I think, we're going to pick up even this time that I've talked to, that are, that are wanting to come over to the county. But one of their biggest concerns is, is they make a lot more money in the city than what they do in the county.
Yeah.
And so I agree with you. I, that 7% is very important for me to get in there as well. So we need to have more two-on-two meetings, I believe, as a board, to look at these as a board and then go back to the superintendent and say, this is what we want to see, this is the vision and direction that we want to see the division go in. So hopefully we can have more of those two-on-two meetings. But thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, I have lobbied for years with our legislators to have a point-of-origin sales tax as compared to a point-of-sale sales tax. The city has much more areas of revenues of sales tax than the county. And a lot of that, you know, and the technology's there. When you walk into Walmart, if they ask you your zip code and I say 228-27, they know where that's coming from. And it ought to be based on point-of-origin versus point-of-sale. But again, as I talked about at the last meeting, we are primarily a people business. And that 7% raise, I agree, as I said the last time, people constitute 75, 80% of our budget, if, if not, if not more. So unless we're going to cut out maintenance and transportation, which could also go to safety issues, or people, or people, and people mean teachers, custodians, cafeteria workers, teachers, bus drivers, on down the line, we've, we've, we've got to find somewhere to find that money. So again, I won't belabor the point, but I look forward to that conversation.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, I'm sorry, I've got to ask it again because I don't remember the answer. So the additional projects, will we meet and vote on that moving forward? Or how does that process work in this crazy budget year?
We would have to, because there would have to be a budget amendment. So again, we are operating on this recommended budget at this point. If the board makes changes to it, you know, that would be a different request unless the number to the locality just remains the same anyway. By April 1st, I do need to let county administrator know what our request from the locality is.
Can we have an extension on that if needed?
Well, I mean, my presentation, that, that's not really needed because your priorities don't, the county doesn't vote on what we spent the money on. The county votes on large categories. So the $3 million increase from the county is something I would request from Mr. King. And then certainly there'll be a budget presentation on April 12th to the Board of Supervisors.
If there is, if there is a discrepancy with the board, can you go back and ask the Board of Supervisors for an extension, saying that as of now, this is it, but, but the board is having more comments and we need some, a little bit more time?
Well, I'm not sure that the locality is willing to, you know, pay more than the $3 million, because their revenue increase is, we're already eating up the vast majority of that. So there isn't, there's another couple million to be had in the conversation.
Well, then you can go back and you can say that we're not, the board is not in favor of where the $3 million is going to and we need an extension.
It's not, the Board of Supervi, you don't have to ask the Board of Supervisors to spend it on certain categories. The Board of Supervisors does not say, oh, here is money for SROs.
I know, I know that. I'm saying, can you go back to the board and ask for an extension?
An extension for what?
For, for what you need to know, they need to know how much money.
But that number is likely not going to change. What you have to change is your priorities.
It, it might change.
You're saying that you're going to ask for more money from the Board of Supervisors?
We might. That's not, that's not, that's not something that's, that, that's not on the table.
I would say that would be, no.
It's, it's your recommendation, but it's not something that's-
My requ, my request to the, to the county administrator has to come by April 1.
I'll ask Board of Supervisors.
Here's, here's what I would say to you again. If you have a commitment from three of the five Board of Supervisors to do more than $3 million, bring it on. I mean, that's-
I think, I think we need to be able to, as a board, tell them what we need as a division, right?
Yeah, and, and, and I can tell you, and I can tell you that I've had that conversation personally. I would, I would hope that other members of the school board have as well with their Board of Supervisor representative. I've spoken with at least three.
Well, one's your brother, so I mean, it's not hard for you to talk to.
Well, but his, he has equal vote to the others.
I get it, I get it.
So, so it would be remiss of me. And by the way, I don't know if that was meant to be a-
No, it's not meant to do anything. It's not, that's not a bad comment.
But what I would say, excuse me.
It's a compliment.
Excuse me.
It's a compliment.
Before my brother was on the Board of Supervisors, I met with his predecessor.
Okay.
That's my fiduciary, that's my fiduciary duty.
It was a compliment.
That's my fiduciary duty.
I am going to take just a moment to remind our board members that we do have two student matters to get to tonight, and I believe at this point, the students are waiting. So I think maybe we can put a cork in, or a pin in this discussion.
I just wanted to make sure Mr. Breeden knows that was not a dig, that was a compliment of his brother, because I like his brother.
Okay. Any further questions for the superintendent? Oh, golly. We're not even done with the agenda yet. Okay, thank you, Dr. Scheikle.
Just as a reminder, the vote on the budget is scheduled for Wednesday at 4:00.
That's right.
Okay, do you want to move into policy revisions? That's you too.
To do those as well. So two budget revisions for information only tonight. One involves our policy regarding medications at school. Our nurses had asked early in the school year whether we could provide some Narcan training for them. Mr. Cross also asked later whether we could potentially do that. We worked on securing potential training dates. And I said back then, training would likely happen in May, so the nurses would have to get trained on how to administer it, properly store it. And so we also then worked with, with Ashley Health on securing a trainer for this event. And then what is required though, is a policy change. So you'll see in the medications policy, the ability for nurses, or the requirement for nurses to be trained. We looked at a number of school divisions to see how they approach it. Some basically require there to be a note in a, in someone's personnel file before they could administer it. Of course, when you think about the reality of how an emergency, an opioid emergency plays out, there certainly isn't the time to say, oh, let's make sure they, they have the proper paperwork in their file. Others required multiple people to be trained. So at this point, the policy requires nurses to be trained and again, we would provide that training and then VDH would make the Narcan available. So that's one policy. The other one is a policy regarding, so it's JECR, regarding non-resident student attendance. So there's some changes that really needed to be made. One, to clarify some of the statements, so some of the actual headings in the existing policy weren't really intuitive. So there was a category called elementary students, and then it talked about elementary students and also middle and high school students. So now we clarified that. We also, there's an element of the policy that if a non-resident student, before a non-resident student can attend, if that student has an IAP or 504 plan, the resident division would have to guarantee that they would cover all the IAP-related costs. And that part of the policy even applied to full-time employees. And so, you know, it's not really something that we want to say to our own employees, yes, your child can come to school unless they have a disability, then they have to go to the other school division. And the, no school division has ever agreed to pay for all the services in another school district. So it's simply a non-starter. And so we wanted to clarify that, that for employees, that does not apply. And then the other part is that we actually would like to extend that benefit to, to part-time employees on an employee, on an employment agreement. So it doesn't apply to, for example, if you work a few hours, you know, then your kids can come here. But we wanted to expand that from full-time employees also to part-time employees with an employment agreement. There are some pieces, and again, that took some of the rewriting, that we want to keep in place. So for example, non-resident students, when we allow them to attend, even with tuition payment, there are requirements that, you know, the student has consistent and punctual attendance. So if then all of a sudden, because the family has to transport the student to school, if all of a sudden we run into these truancy issues, then that's a different conversation. If there's significant behavior issues, then that becomes a conversation. So those elements remain in place. The previous version of the policy simply states that for full-time employees, they don't have to pay tuition. Now, for nobody, there's no exemption to tuition for anybody else, but this simply expands that part to, again, part-time employees on a contract. And the special ed provision doesn't apply and there's no tuition payment for that. But all the other provisions also still apply with the exception of paperwork change. So it's simply for employees, and that's how it's always been handled, there's a, a letter to the superintendent annually rather than the full non-resident tuition application because again, that's more for people who pay tuition. I believe we have 60 students who pay tuition who are non-residents. And then we have, you know, a significantly higher number of staff members who bring their kids. It's, I think, 100 and some, 112, something like that. And so again, those are for information only. Please feel free to contact me with any questions and then we'll bring those for action next time.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions? No. Okay, we're going to move on. Mr. Fitzgerald, can you please provide us with a CTE update?
Okay, it's never, it's never a good thing to be at the end of the agenda. I want you to know that. But hey, I, I want to bring you just some news about CTE and a quick CTE update. And I do promise it'll be quick. I feel very fortunate and I'm very blessed to work with 46 of the coolest teachers in, in the nation. And I believe that. I would put our CTE teachers up against any group of CTE teachers, CTE teachers anywhere in the nation and maybe even in the world. And if you've been around to look at our programs, I think you could see why. The reason we're able to have those teachers is because of you, your support. And, you know, I look at, oh, gosh, I've been doing this for almost 40 years, right? And I look over these 40 years and I think about the support that Rockingham County has given to career and technical education, and man, it's there. I mean, I talk about the 46 teachers, that's not even counting anything at MTC, which again, is another crown jewel in our system. So I just wanted to say that and I thank you, personally thank you for it. Greg, if you'll click onto the next one there. Our CTE programs make it real. I had that in the first slide. And what we try to do in all of our programs is to take content, integrate it with what kids are learning in the academic subjects, and give them like a marketable skill that they can use later on in life. We have five different programs in the high school. You can see them on the, on the board there, agriculture, business, family, consumer science, marketing and tech ed. All of those are at the high school level. And then at the middle school level, we have those four with the exception of marketing. Marketing is a kind of an offshoot of business, and again, we don't offer that until high school. Trade and industrial education, of course, is at MTC infused with a couple of those other programs. Greg? There's three components to every career and technical education program. And I just want to remind you about this because sometimes we forget about those three components. The first one, of course, everybody knows, is classroom and laboratory instruction. That's where we take theory in the classroom. We add it into the, a laboratory where we get real-life experiences. Those experiences are all competency-based. They are based on state competencies. And then the curriculum is also based on business and industry standards. So for every CTE class, there's actually a committee that gets together at the state level that includes teachers, some parents, and business and industry, and they review those periodically to make sure that those competencies are relevant. Then for our local programs, we also have the CTE Advisory Committee countywide that we share with Harrisonburg and Massanutten Tech Center. You guys approved the committee earlier this year. They meet and they review any of the competencies that they, they want to. They have a chance to look at curriculum on an individual basis and ask lots of questions. They also are responsible for approving our funding, as you are, with the Perkins Funds through the- through the federal government, under the direction of the state government. Now, we also have experiential learning, and that's where CTE is really set apart from other courses. We have some sort of experiential learning in every one of our classes. That could be school-based, hands-on experience, like in a greenhouse, or in a lab, a culinary arts lab, those types of things. Or they could be supervised home projects. And we see that a lot in our ag programs, supervised agricultural experiences. And we have work-based learning. Now, this is cool, because when you think about work-based learning, because of you, which you've done over the past couple of years, we've added two work-based learning facilitators in the county. And I'm very proud to announce that as of yesterday, no, excuse me, Friday, they had 521 students that they're supervising. That's a lot, and that's quite a task. And down the road, we'll probably be looking for more work-based learning facilitators. But right now, those guys are doing a wonderful job, and that's Phil Judd and Eric Baylor. Now, the other thing, too, that really is part of CTE that sometimes we forget is leadership training. Folks, I can tell you, if you have not been to a CTSO or a Career and Technical Student Organization meeting, you ought to go. They're very formalized. They're very polite. They get the job done, and they do it in the right way. Extremely professional. I'm proud to say that I have attended many of those on the local, state, and national level. And guys, I'm telling you, you would be amazed at what those kids can do. This past October, I had a chance to go out with Dr. Scheikle to the FFA convention. 70,000 students in the Lucas Oil Stadium, 70,000, and Ms. Lohr, too, forgot about that.
Thank you.
70,000, and when the gavel falls, they're all quiet. They don't heckle. They don't say anything to each other. That's not part of the business. It is awesome. And again, I think that's something that's really a strength of career and technical student organizations. And then also, every CTE program also involves some sort of service learning. There's just so many to name. It could be a trash pickup along roads. It could be a river pickup. It can be supplying food banks. All of those things are part of the leadership development. Now, I'll tell you this, because there's a reason that this becomes really important, Greg. It becomes important, because when we start thinking about CTE in the future, we're going to have to look at something called the Career Readiness Index, or CCRI, I guess it is. You'll see it in a second, where all of this stuff plays into effect. It's going to be part of standards of accreditation beginning next year. And it's something I think we're well ahead of the ballgame on. Our CTE teachers' responsibilities are to run those CTSOs. They have to follow state competencies and industry credentials. We're in a really good position right now. I think if you look at the state of CTE in Rockingham County, we are far ahead of a lot of counties in the idea that our credentials are real in a lot of cases, and they're things that students can take with them after high school, and they can make some money with. So that's pretty neat. I do want to mention to you, too, about extended contracts. You know, you provide extended contracts for agricultural teachers, marketing teachers, and tech ed teachers. We have supplements for business teachers and family and consumer science teachers, most of them, to conduct CTSO activities. And this is important, and again, I hope that you guys will continue to provide those. I think it's essential to maintain what we have in CTE. Greg? Now, what's new, again, is we're doing more and more focus on work-based learning. We're trying to develop more and more business and industry partnerships. I want to invite you to an event on April 19th. We're calling it Career Kickstart. It's going to be at the Atlantic Union Center on the campus of JMU. It's a joint project with Harrisonburg and MTC. Right now, as of last week, we had 107, I believe it is, business and industry, different business and industry representatives coming to actually work with our juniors and seniors and to even perhaps interview kids who might be seniors looking for a job. They'll also talk a lot about potentials for internship and credit to be earned and pay to be earned while they're still a student, maybe for the juniors. Students can get credit for those experiences, and we've really upped the number of credits in the past two years that students are earning for outside-of-school work. They can get a credit for supervised agricultural experiences, a credit for apprenticeships, credit for internships, and even for mentorships that have credit. And again, that requires 280 hours of work outside of school in most cases, although some school-based enterprises can count, too. So that's kind of cool. So let's go to the next one. This is what I was talking about a minute ago, the CCCRI, Career, College, and Civics Readiness Indicator. That basically is a, it's found, or we get the index, from an unduplicated count of students that are involved in those experiences up there. I had Cheryl Eastep run our CCCRI kind of this year, just to see where we would be if this was a year that we had accreditation standards based on that. And we scored very well. We're well above where we need to be to reach that accountability. So I feel really well about that. Anyway, that's just a really quick update. Next school board meeting, I'm going to bring to you the Perkins Plan for information, so you can look at it, see where we're spending all of our money. But I just wanted you to take a look and kind of think a little in-depth about where we are with CTE. We have a lot of really neat places I think we're going. As you know, we added the real estate course next year. Our aerospace classes have literally taken off, and we have lots of students there. We're even having students go about two weeks to take FAA 107 licensing tests, which that allows them to fly the bigger drones. So that's CTE in a nutshell. That's the State of the Union. I think it's good. Do you guys have any questions at all about that? Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Falk. So last month was CTE month, and we always like to try to do something for our CTE teachers. I really believe the CTE teachers are the coolest teachers ever, and you're the coolest school board ever. So you guys have some folders I hope that you'll use and carry with pride.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions about my presentation tonight?
Mr. Fitzgerald, thank you so much for just having an awesome CTE program. What you stated is the truth. We have one of the best CTE programs in the state of Virginia. And people like yourself, Marshall Price, Kevin Hutton out there, that's put so much work and time in, even before Marshall being out there. But it's amazing what you guys have created, and you leave a good legacy for the next CTE supervisor to be able to come in and oversee this. So thank you for all your work in Rockingham County Public Schools. Thank you for caring and loving this program as much as you do. And it shows by the standard that we have set in Rockingham County for CTE. So thank you so much for what you've done. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. And we're still waiting on you rescinding your letter of retirement, just saying. Okay, school board members, that concludes our information items for the evening. We're going to move on to other business, and we have under that, school board questions and comments. Let's see, I'm going to start with Mr. Breeden.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. I'll be brief, because I know we have parents waiting who have concerns at home they need to address. The budget process started in January. I have had conversations with three of the four board members in that time. So just as a matter of public record, there's been a lot of time to discuss it. Dr. Scheikle, when our people order recreational reading material, I would assume that there is more often than not a statement from the National Librarians Association or some such organization that says that this material is recommended for grades A to C. If I'm correct on that, could you perhaps, if you feel it appropriate, to talk with Ms. Tate about whether when we order new books or new materials, if that rating could be posted on the inside lapel of the material, which would give a parent who's looking at their kid's material some guideline as to what that organization... And I realize there's going to be disagreement as to what organization that should be, but that sounds like a good one to me. Yeah, it doesn't exist for all books. There may be a broader category. So it may just say, you know, young adults or whatever the category is. And so they're much broader than, so they're not by years. It doesn't say, you know, like you have on TV and movies, you know, PG-13, PG. Even those are categories, right, that are pretty broad. So there are some websites that, certainly there are recommendations that are maybe, you know, for which grade levels a book may be appropriate as that's ordered, but it doesn't necessarily come with a sticker.
No, no, I realize that would be something we have to do.
Common Sense Media is a website that we've also made, you know, parents aware of. Parents can, certainly, for example, parents have access to looking at what their child has checked out of the library, right? So there's not, they don't just have to see it in the bookbag, that information is available. And, but again, Common Sense Media doesn't review every book. But that's one site that we have found helpful. So for example, in a book challenge that we recently had, the committee looked at three different sites, and Common Sense Media was one of the more conservative ones. And so there is much, much more information on that website than you can really put in a rating, because what often matters, too, just as it is, you know, with a movie rating, whether or not it is appropriate for someone depends on, you know, is it because of, for example, sexual content? Or is it because of violence? Or is it because of both? Or is it, you know, so it depends on which theme it is. And so some families, you know, if someone says, well, it's appropriate for age 15, that may be because of the violence in the book, and some parents, that's not going to bother them. So you really do have to have a little bit of context, I think, with movie ratings that's often provided, right, on TV. It says what the elements are. Why did it earn a rating of mature audiences only, or whatever it may be? And so I think that's, again, communication that I have talked to Ms. Tate about, you know, to make sure that families are aware of those websites, you know, to say, okay, Common Sense Media, because they provide so much more detail. They talk about, you know, what the themes are in the book, who it might be appropriate for, what might be upsetting to someone, and why it's earned the rating that it has. And it's a fairly conservative version of these websites, you know, that provide information. So on Amazon, of course, it's a little bit different, because that's more user-driven. But I would say, again, I think if parents want to have good information, I think checking the book on Common Sense Media is a really good avenue, because it provides a tremendous amount of information. It's well researched. We have a number of people, you know, who use it, and I use it, too, when I look at why a book may be, right? But to put just a sticker, you lose some value.
Right. And again, maybe it's just something that explains, this is the website. This is the Common Sense Media website. Or you can contact such and such if you have a question about this. I get that it's hard to be, but I'm just trying to...
And so that's also, I think, something that, again, that's what I talked to Ms. Tate about, you know, whether in communication with parents, right, there is additional information. If you want to know what your child is checking out in the library, here's how you can do that. And here are some suggested websites you can access to check what information is available. So it's not, you know, that information is available, and I think there's really useful information available. And for parents who want to look at what their child is reading and what the themes may be, I think there are multiple good options, and that's certainly something that we do want to communicate with families, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dr. McQuillen?
I'd just like to end the evening by thanking Ms. Baker for her hospitality this evening. I know we said it earlier, but we very much appreciate it. I know it was a huge job getting everything down, and we appreciate your hosting us this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Cross?
Yeah, I'd like to, first of all, just ask Dr. Scheikle if he would get back with the parent that spoke tonight with the concerns with the books. And he had a few questions tonight of when he could file different paperwork, if necessary. And so if he could just get back with, I think it was Mr. Nicholson that had that in public comments. So if he could get back with him just on that, or someone within the division, that would be great.
Sure.
And then second, Ms. Lohr, I would like for the board to at least have a conversation over this topic concerning our books in our libraries and possibly even looking at a rating system. I know it's a big, ugly temple that no one wants to talk about or wants to address, but we have rating systems for everything. A kid can't go to the movie if it's got violence or sexual content in the movie. And I think it's a little bit unfair to say, you know, here's a website you can go to if you're concerned about what books your child is reading, when in actuality, a lot of kids that wanted, at that age, they're going to hide things from parents as well. So it would be nice for the parent to be able to say, hey, I approved this rating for my child for any books coming out of the library. And at least, I know that would be a major undertaking, and I know everything's worked. We don't want to stay late at school board meetings as well. But I think it's our due diligence because of a lot of the material that's in certain books in our libraries that are just frankly, just inappropriate. And when you read books, even at the high school level, like Mister Fury, and you read the sexual content in the description and what it goes into in that, it's shocking. And it's, I don't care if you're 18 years old. I mean, that is straight-up pornographic in the library. So I do think we need to at least go to a rating system, and hopefully, we could sit down as a school board before next school year starts, have these conversations, and maybe come up with something that we could do. So if you could put that on the agenda, I would appreciate it.
Note to add it to the retreat items that we want to discuss in training as we move forward. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, Mr. Falk? Thank you. I, too, am going to pass. Dr. Scheikle?
Yeah, just a quick comment, right, for movies, it's the Motion Picture Association of America that provides the ratings. You would have absolutely no consistency if individual librarians are doing that. Not every library has the same book. And in terms of students hiding the books that they check out from the library, we do inform parents how they can check which books their students are checking out. It doesn't just mean you have to find the book or ask your child for it. You can actually check the library system and see which book your child has checked out. So for parents that are interested, they certainly have access to that information.
I appreciate that. At the same time, I would say, Dr. Scheikle, that if you go to see a movie, they're not going to call home and say, well, you knew the movie was out in the theater, so it was your responsibility as a parent to make sure your child didn't come to the movies. They ask for an ID before you go in to see a R-rated film. So I think the burden falls back on the schools and not just completely on the parents to go back and say, it's your due diligence to find out what your child is reading in the library. So again, I definitely want to look forward to conversations with the school board at our meeting and have this conversation.
The difference with movies is there's a national organization that provides it. So if the National Librarians Association actually provided a rating for books, that would be a different conversation, because then you can assure that the same book in different libraries gets the same rating. So that's one of the reasons.
Right. And again, this comes down to school board governance. So it comes down to not a national rating system, or what's good for the national rating, but what's good for our community and what's good for our kids.
So who would determine then how a book is rated in Rockingham County?
Okay, that's a good question. We could have a community dialogue with parents, and we could also have elected officials talk and find out what that looks like. Same way we've done the superintendent search, we've got community dialogue with parents. We've got community dialogue with teachers. We've got community dialogue with stakeholders. We could do the same thing with the books.
And you would do that for every book that a library orders?
I think that we, no. I think you would set a standard, as if, does this have sexual content in it? Does it have profanity in it? What does it have in it like that? And so same way as movies. So if it has sexual content in it, like Mister Fury, that's going to be on a R-rated system there.
Okay.
I know it's a little bit complicated, but it does make sense.
It's not complicated. It's just that there's no such category as, oh, it has sexual content. It depends on what that content is.
Well, it's sexual.
Obviously, we need to talk about this more. So I'll put it on the agenda for the retreat.
Come to sixth grade, you can find out what that is, so.
And for anybody watching, if you see us flailing our hands or shaking our heads, it's because there's a fly up here. There's a fly pestering at least three of us, for sure. So that must mean that we stink, and it's time to go. So... Board members, we have reason to move into closed session. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, A1. Personnel: Specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation. And A2. One or more particular students specifically related to discipline and requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. All those in favor to go into closed session, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We are, thank you all for coming. Oh, I did forget, it looks like all the students left anyway. But thank you all for coming. Please, safe travels home, and have a good night.